Okay, Councilor Patrick will introduce today's guest.
Uh, this is my daughter, youngest daughter, Lily. She's uh, ten years old, attends kindergarten school, fourth grade. And uh, she's gonna lead us in the flesh.
I'd like to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our general law.
Great. Question call, roll please.
Mayor?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Present.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
All present, Mayor.
Uh, item number one, please.
Item number one, public hearing relative to amending the city charter section C two six three A in title of West Broadway Parking Improvement District. Whereas at a meeting held on May twenty first, two thousand twenty four, the city clerk chairman was authorizing directly to advertise for a public hearing to be held at the meeting of June fourth, two thousand twenty four, which began at seven P M. in the council chambers of the municipal building Fulton, New York, relative to the proposed amendment to the city charter section C two six three A entitled West Parkway Parking Improvement District to increase the special assessment from two thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars annually. Mayor Rice has declared this a public hearing open. We have David Fair, seven twenty eight Ontario Street, who'd like to speak in regards to this public hearing.
Good evening. I would first of all like to start by saying kudos to everyone that the public hearings now not have just the topic, but also the details of what the issue is about, which makes having a public hearing more productive. In terms of this particular public hearing, I have two questions. The first one is, where is the West Broadway Parking Improvement District? And then, who will pay for that increase? Or I guess, who pays those fees now? And what happens if they don't pay?
The West Broadway District. Uh, all property with frontage on the south side of West Broadway, north side of West Broadway, situated between West First Street and West Second Street, property with frontage on the west side of West First Street, between West Broadway and Beach Street. All property with frontage on Beach Street, between West First Street and West Second Street. And all property with frontage on West Second Street, between West Broadway and Beach Street. So, back in like nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, I was out of the council and the city purchased uh, the building where the C D A is now. And uh, we inherited that half of the parking lot that I think runs up to about half of uh, half of that parking lot is actually, you know, the city parking lot. So uh, you know, we maintain it and uh, we have a special assessment district there. This has not been upgraded since nineteen ninety-four.
And uh, I guess, do the businesses that use that parking lot?
Yes.
They pay it?
Yep.
Now, what would happen if they say, "I don't wanna pay the increase"?
It's on the tax bill. It's on, it's on the tax bill.
Okay, alright, good.
So if they didn't wanna pay the increase, they'd be rejected to this public hearing.
And sooner or later, they'd be taking them to court for not paying their tax bill. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, project committee, you know, a few items in their reading, uh, last one. This came up, something that hasn't been updated. He looked at several things. And uh, they brought this to the board for public hearing. Anyone else?
No one else would like to speak on this matter?
Anyone from the council?
Nothing.
No.
Whereas members of the public, members of the common council, and all attendants have had been given an equal opportunity to express their written or oral comments regarding the proposed amendment to the city charter section C two six three A entitled West Broadway Parking Improvement District to increase the special assessment from two thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars annually. Whereas Mayor Rice has asked for a motion to close this meeting. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Is that you, Mr. Farner? Councilor Farner, was that you?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? This public hearing is now closed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the proposed amendment of the city charter section C two six three A entitled West Broadway Parking Improvement District of the City of Fulton is hereby approved. May I have a motion for this result?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Let's hear a roll call vote. First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number two.
Item number two is a public hearing relative to amending the city charter section C two six three entitled Canal View Off-Street Parking Improvement District. Whereas at the meeting held on May twenty first, two thousand twenty four, the city clerk chairman was authorizing directly to advertise for a public hearing to be held at the meeting of June fourth, two thousand twenty four, which began at seven P M. in the council chambers of the municipal building Fulton, New York, relative to the proposed amendment to the city charter section C two six three entitled Canal View Off-Street Parking Improvement District to increase the special assessment from thirty thousand dollars to forty thousand dollars annually. Mayor Rice declares this public hearing open. David Fair, seven twenty eight Ontario Street.
Same question as to the uh, the first uh, hearing. Where is the Canal View parking? Exactly, which lot are we talking about?
Uh, shall be a improvement district known as Canal View Off-Street Parking Improvement District, bounded by as follows. On the east side, by the center line of New York State Route forty-one. On the south, by the center of Rochester Street. On the west, by the blue line of the Barche Canal. On the north, by the irregular property line. Strung in exists a urban renewal project A seven. Special assessment in the amount of forty thousand, effective January one, two thousand fourteen. It's hereby evident Canal View Parking Improvement District. So that's actually the downtown lot. And uh, I don't know if anybody from the council chimed in on the uh, audit finance budget committee, but uh, part of what drove this is uh, I think the council would like to make improvements to those parking lots. And uh, this is a way for me to raise the revenue. Somebody from the uh, audit finance budget committee would chime in on that. They, they talked about making improvements to both of these parking lots.
So David, what we discussed at the C J, we wanna raise this, right? What are we going to give the people for the monies? Uh, for the raising, right? Uh, the parking lot in the ducts were behind N D's, uh, the bike shop. It is in desperate need of resurfacing. Uh, so C J is definitely going to look into that. It may not be this year. Uh, obviously, it's too late. But we did talk about that. So next year, we are going to look into additional monies that we are collecting from this additional.
Yeah, what we have to do is budget for that. So in other words, the revenue would be coming in and we budget toward it.
None of the streets has a one lot that, or the one over at First and Ninety Street, that was on. Thanks.
Anyone else?
I did, I did sign up for it.
That's okay.
It just, it came to me while I was sitting back there. Um, you're raising this, you're raising the assessments. And what you mean, you're gonna raise the taxes to those businesses. Those businesses are gonna pass that cost on to their customers. So, like the Locke Restaurant may cost you, you know, fifteen dollars for a hamburger today. May cost you sixteen dollars tomorrow because of the increases they're gonna have to pay for the, the tax increase. Just keep that in mind. It's supposed to be public parking. Uh, the city's supposed to, should be supplying it. Should be part of, you know, regular taxes. I understand it hasn't been raised.
Two thousand fourteen.
Right, I, I understand, I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
That, that isn't the point. The point is, is that you know, the owners and the people that are running these businesses are gonna pass that cost on to the public. The people that are coming in, using their products. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Where is?
Council? I think, I think.
Yeah, I was just touching on that. Uh, treat it as a maintenance fee. I mean, obviously, ten years into doing here, uh, uh, we gotta maintain it. We, we know, we gotta upkeep. So, there, there's your increase.
Anyone else from the council? Whereas members of the public, members of the common council, and all in attendance have been given an equal opportunity to express their written or oral comments regarding the proposed amendment to the city charter section C two six three entitled Canal View Off-Street Parking Improvement District to increase the special assessment from thirty thousand dollars to forty thousand dollars annually. Whereas Mayor Rice has asked for a motion to close the public hearing. May I have a motion?
Oh.
Councilor Taylor, second?
Second.
Councilor Patrick? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Public hearing is now closed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the proposed amendment of the city charter section C two six three entitled Canal View Off-Street Parking Improvement District of the City of Fulton is hereby approved. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilor Avery, and second?
Second.
Councilor Cobb? This will be a roll call vote. First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move on to item number three, public hearing relative to amending the fees for the collection and disposal of prohibited waste materials. Whereas at the meeting held on May twenty first, two thousand twenty four, the city clerk chairman was authorizing directly to advertise for a public hearing to be held at the meeting of June fourth, two thousand twenty four, which began at seven P M. in the council chambers of the municipal building Fulton, New York, relative to... Relative to the proposed amendment to the fees for the collection and disposal of prohibited waste materials as follows. Furniture items. On the current uh, on this charge is twelve dollars. Um, and the current violation charge is twenty dollars. The proposed change would be uh, the proposed on this charge would go from twelve to fifteen dollars. And then the proposed violation fee would go from twenty to fifty dollars. Uh, the bag dumping of black bags. The current violation fee is seven dollars per bag. That rate is proposed to go to ten dollars per bag. Garbage out early is seven dollars per bag is the current violation fee and is proposed to go to ten dollars per bag. Mayor Rice has declared this public hearing open. David Fair, seven twenty eight Ontario Street.
This is just a quick question as to uh, why weren't the white goods also included? Uh, raising the price for those as well as for the furniture?
The what, Dave?
White goods? Uh, white goods.
Oh, we, we looked at that, yep. And uh, yeah, determined that uh...
Anybody else from the council or the council committee?
We just decided not to listen.
Yep, okay. I just, as long as we started, but yeah. Yep, yeah, we did talk about it, yeah.
Anything else, Dave?
Nope, nothing.
Frank Castilla, three seventy-two South Seventh Street.
Davey? Davey, what is, what is the list of the white goods? Yeah, I'll show you. I can't read it, Dave, I don't have my glasses. Tell me what they are.
Alright, then I'll read it then.
Okay.
Um, this is off the city's website.
Okay.
City of Fulton Reference Guide Trash Metal Electronics. White goods would be your stoves, ovens, washers, dryers, hot water heaters, refrigerator, freezers, air conditioners, dehumidifiers, dishwashers, and water coolers. All are currently charged plain box care.
Alright, good enough, thank you. Ladies, that's all white goods. Uh, at the last meeting, when this was announced about this public hearing, I asked a specific question and there was a lot of uh, going back and forth as to what it actually was going to be. As far as the fee, the fine, uh, different, different issues. Uh, I checked with the county and the county, the county did raise their rate on uh, mattresses to fifteen dollars each mattress because of uh, and I know there's a big issue where a hotel owner got a, got a deal on it because uh, he wanted it to be by tonnage. It wasn't by tonnage, you know, more of it by per mattress. So I, I agree with the fifteen dollars. It was, is, I asked at that time, is this going to be for everybody or is this just a violation? And it was, going back and forth, we didn't know which was going, what it was gonna be. Now I can see, because of what you posted online, that the fifty dollar violation fee, if you put it out there and you haven't called and asked for one, it's gonna be fifty dollars. And I agree with the fifteen dollars because that's what the county's in charge of now. And I agree with it. I didn't agree with the fine and the fee at the county. I probably voted against it. Pretty sure I did. Uh, fees, the same thing as taxes to me. I think they should all be included. The taxes that you already paid to take care of things, but they don't. So I'm in agreement with you guys moving it to fifteen dollars to cover the cost. But you're gonna get charged when you get there. And it's a city that's gonna get charged yet. Then you have to pass it on to somebody and it just keeps going rolling downhill. Then the taxpayer wind doesn't paint more. Uh, thank you very much. That's all I have to say about this. Uh, glad to see that there was some clarification in what was asked at the last meeting and wasn't there of that. Thank you very much.
I think uh, one of the things we wanted to do, I can't speak for the entire committee, but we wanted to take a look at the fines. And uh, we find furniture and mattresses out where people haven't come in and signed up for it. I think the council might be a little bit harder on the fine, hoping that we can get more compliance. So if anybody on the committee wants to uh, chime in on that, let's uh, take an opportunity to do so. We're raising the fine from twenty to fifty. What's that? No, no, none from the council?
Anyone else like to speak? Whereas members of the public, members of the common council, and all in attendance have been given an equal opportunity to express their written or oral comments regarding the proposed amendment to the fees for the collection and disposal of prohibited waste materials. Whereas Mayor Rice has asked for a motion to close the public hearing. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilor Avery, and second?
Second.
Councilor Cobb? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Public hearing is now closed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the proposed amendment to the fees for the collection and disposal of prohibited waste materials is hereby approved. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilor Avery, and second?
Second.
Councilor Cobb? It's a roll call vote. First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, before we uh, move into the agenda and uh, public comments on the agenda, we got a presentation from our partners, uh, at Siemens. So they're just gonna give us a brief overview of uh, what would be resolution... Number twelve. So, so this will be a presentation on uh, what is the agenda, I believe, number twelve.
Absolutely, well, thank you Mayor Rice. Uh, my name is Chris Cad. I serve as our municipal market lead at Siemens Smart Infrastructure. Joining me is Chris Gump, our senior energy engineer. Uh, there's a lot of familiar faces in this room from our, our work with the city over the last three years and our work with the school district. Uh, three years ago, we began a comprehensive audit of all city facilities, looking for uh, areas to find efficiencies. So lighting, H VAC, heating, uh, you know, drafty, drafty fire department windows, et cetera. Uh, other mechanical equipment that's energy intensive, uh, like ice making equipment down, down at War Memorial. Uh, today's the, the culmination of that. So uh, last uh, July, uh, you know, we entered into agreement with this, with the city uh, to, to really bring this performance contract in, identify the scope and, and move forward. Uh, National Grid had approved the appropriate paperwork last month and uh, today we're, we're here to finalize that. Uh, just a quick overview, I know that you have a busy agenda tonight. You'll see lighting improvements at all city facilities, getting everything upgraded LED, which drives a significant utility cost savings. Building envelope improvements, especially at City Hall and the ice rink. Softball field lighting and also new lighting for dream courts. Uh, additional H VAC improvements at War Memorial uh, that have already been made uh, to ensure that we have heating in the winter. Uh, the chiller replacement at the ice rink as a city facility that's critical. Uh, the current chiller was installed in the early nineties. Uh, infrared uh, heating for one of the storage buildings down at Waterworks. Upgrading our thermostats at City Hall Fire Station Number Two, War Memorial, V W Garage. Uh, certainly, uh, some additional sidewalks at Voorhees Park uh, as well as a new splash uh, pad down on the waterfront adjacent to War Memorial. Uh, and last but not certainly not least, uh, moving that control uh, back to the city of that asset of those uh, national grid lights so you'll have greater control and reduce expenses going into the future. Uh, we appreciate everyone's partnership over the last three years. It's been a, a long journey. Uh, but you've all been critical parts of this, as have the, has the staff uh, throughout the city. Uh, thank you and uh, we look forward to getting construction started soon.
Thank you.
Would anyone from the council like to comment on that presentation before we move on?
Okay. We'll move on to the com, uh, public comment period for the agenda items only. We have Tommy Schimpf, six oh five Peven Street. We have the C S E A uh, union president.
Good evening. I'm Tommy Schimpf. I'm the president for C S E A unit eight thousand and one. We are humbled and grateful to be an item on the agenda tonight to authorize the mayor to sign a tenant agreement for our union. I'd like to take a moment of your time to tell you about who and what union we are. We've always been considered the little brother out of the three unions that provide emergency and other very important services for our great city. We're the ones that pick up the trash, recyclables daily, no matter what the weather conditions are thrown at us that day. It's the same people after being up all night plowing the roads or cleaning sidewalks for our police and fire department to provide our city with the service and so our residents can conduct their daily businesses. We're the ones that pick up the yard waste after picking up garbage and recyclables all day and extreme heat. We are that union. We're the ones that fixes and maintains the police cars and help with some of the fire department's training. If there is a city event, I can guarantee you that a union member has assisted in one way. We are that union. We're the ones that provide the water to all our residents and businesses and fire hydrants. We're the ones to maintain and repair in all hours of the night, miles of storm and sewer lines. We are that union. We are the ones that treat all of the city's wastewater places as safer and cleaner, back into the river. We're the ones that maintain all of our beautiful parks and campgrounds. We clean up downtown, sweep and maintain the flower areas. We are that union. We are the ones that handle all the billing, taxes, filing, and majority of the clerical work in City Hall. We're the union that works diligently in our codes office trying to make sure our properties and rentals are in compliance. We are that union. We are the ones that maintain abandoned properties been shut, that have been sent in to clean out some of the mess left behind from the less fortunate in our city. We are that union. We're also the union that maintains all of our street signs and paint the directional striping on the roads. Hang up the flags and banners for all the remembrance of the men and women who served our great country. See, we are that union that share not only the burdens but the victories of our great city because we are the union that lives here. I might be being a little biased, but my opinion, we are the union that engines, engines the big red Fulton machine. And I respectfully say whatever decision that is made tonight, we're going to continue to step up our game and strive to achieve collectively the same goals our leaders of our city want to reach. We are that union. We will hold our union members to a professional standard that will continue to achieve excellence because we want this mayor and council and future ones, most importantly, our residents of Fulton, to say, "That's our union." Thank you.
Chief Michael Curtis, would you like to speak on an agenda item? Chief of Police?
Good evening, thank for everybody for coming. Yeah, I am the chief of police here. Uh, if you don't recognize me, not in uniform tonight. So I did have a specific agenda item that I'll be speaking to. I wanted to touch on a couple other things. Just a little brief update on our department. Um, you know, over the last, uh, earlier in the year, we hired uh, six uh, new recruits. Um, we still have maintained four of those in the academy. Two did not, unfortunately, two did not make it. Um, it's, that's not uncommon. Uh, we'll have another agility test in July, uh, looking to fill some, the vacancies, uh, look towards filling vacancies and another test in September. Uh, and we'll start the process over again. Um, so it's uh, it's moving in a good direction. Those four recruits are, are past the point uh, where we worry about them. There's always, they could always not make it, but uh, they're in a good position right now. So we're happy about that. Uh, we uh, at the end of last year, um, or actually really last year, we started to really look at uh, grants uh, more than we ever have as a department. Uh, so I applied for a, a law enforcement technology grant at the end of the year. It's something that um, I had expected to come out shortly after the first of the year and there was a long delay. Um, it was a little concerning, um, because I kinda shot for the moon uh, with the proposal. Um, and Earl, I think a couple weeks ago, we got notice uh, that it was tentatively approved and we were waiting to get our official notice, um, which came uh, on Friday. So they officially notified us that we, um, that what I had asked for was granted in full and they gave us a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar grant uh, to purchase law enforcement technology. Second, you from... And, and these are items that we might not have been able to afford as a, as a small community. License plate readers, um, scanners for parking tickets, um, all the advanced technology that, that comes into police department. And the bonus to that is that it also helps uh, recruiting and maintenance and maintaining current personnel. Uh, young people frequently in interviews ask, you know, "What are you guys are doing in the area of technology?" And now we can tell, we, we have one drone in that grant is to purchase another drone, uh, you know, updating our computer system. So that's a good sign for us as we move forward. The other item that I'll touch on quickly, I'd be uh, remiss if I didn't mention it, uh, is item thirteen, as uh, they just spoke about. I, I say that the twenty-three years that I've worked here, we've worked closely with the C S E A and, and their members, uh, high quality individuals. There's not been a single time that the police department in my career or as chief, that I haven't, that I've asked for something and they've always come through. So, you know, whatever that plays in it, uh, you have a high quality group. They have integrity. They work hard. And on to the, the other agenda item is item fourteen. Uh, over the last uh, recent times, we have discussed some issues in our local parks. Um, the gazebo has been uh, an area that we've struggled with. Um, so we've been talking to councilors, myself, uh, Chris Waldron, Parks and Rec. We had a meeting with the mayor and the councilor Taylor uh, very recently um, and decided, what action can we take? Uh, when you look at our codes, uh, the Parks and Recreation Code, uh, section four forty-nine dash one and four forty-nine dash two, that's all there is as far as basically rules and regulations for our, our parks and recreation areas. That's the hours and the penalties if you violate the hours. That's it. Uh, most city codes, um, we began to research many, many municipalities throughout the state. Uh, most of them have a, a much more extensive uh, code than that. Uh, so that's what we're, we're looking at uh, with opening this public hearing is, I've already gathered information, began to uh, edit codes uh, from other municipalities to fit what we need.[1796.63] information, began to edit codes from other municipalities to fit what we need. We'll make a, hopefully, a complete presentation to the council next week during the legislative meeting, and then we'll be able to move forward later in the month with instituting what they think as a council is best suited for our community. It's really focused on making sure that we offer healthy and safe park environments, which right now, we struggle doing under the current environment. You can't take care of some of the problems if you, unless it falls into a criminal matter. So we want to put these in the code, so the code violations, and they still come with penalties. They are still, in some cases, considered violations or misdemeanors and come with fines. But it gives us some more tools, the Police Department, the Parks and Recs Department, and the council, more tools to be able to make sure that those spaces are safe and appropriate and are available for our community. Any questions on any of that? There'll be more details as we, as we move forward.
Thank you.
Second Tuesday of the month, the 4th block, will we be legislating any?
Uh, Wednesday, next Wednesday, so 12.
Wednesday, 5:30.
Yeah. So we should have a, a very close final document that would really just need some, hopefully just some editing and tweaking at that point. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Celia, please have a seat on the second street.
Good evening again. First part of my questions were answered by this gentleman here about what's on the, what the items are that are in the bond resolution that you're going to be taking off table and bringing back to vote on tonight. But what it doesn't say is how much each item is going to cost. At the county level, when you draw money, you specify how much money is being spent on each item. And I was wondering if there's a way that we can do that. Mr. Patrick, do you know how much each item is going to cost us?
Totally mine.
No, not totally mine. How much each item?
Chris, would you be able to answer that? I can certainly grab additional information, right? So I have the accurate numbers. But is there so, there's so many measures contained within it, right? You've got everything from caulk to splash park equipment to different sorts of lighting.
No, I mean like the splash park, how much the splash park can cost, how much is the lighting at the dream courts over there? The dream courts, I have a question on that, in that I thought we received a grant from Bayheim. I know we received ARPA funds for that, and I thought that would have covered everything that was needed over there. And we're saying that it didn't. Did the, what did Bayheim's grant cover, and what did the ARPA funds cover? I mean, there's, there's questions in there that I had because I had the information as to what was, you know, what was given to the city already about the dream parks over there.
We are understanding that the lighting actually was not covered for a certain reason.
Yeah, I think that's why we're here, one of the reasons too.
Okay, I, so, see, that's kind of questioning, how much is the lighting, you know, at the dream parks, you know, the dream park across the city? I mean, I'm not against it, but I'm asking because there were so many grants that were available. And there's still grants available for just about everything that we have put out there. And, okay, and I don't know why we didn't apply for some grants instead of going with the bond issue on this. Anybody, you know, anybody got something on that?
Chris, so just on the grant side, there's been $250,000 obtained for the chiller at the ice rink, right? Thirty, upwards of $30,000 in Iserda incentives, $15,000 in clean communities, and we'll obviously continue to apply for those as you get more clean communities points as well. On the dream courts, my understanding is those were a need that was, that was a need that was not met under what the city had already received, so they wanted, needed to obviously get that done in an exhibition fashion.
The, there's a lot of questions in there that I don't think will be answered properly, but the splash park I'm hearing is costing $800,000. Is that fact efficient?
No, that splash park has been right-sized, right? With other improvements have been made. And so that splash park has been right-sized, I believe it's a, Chris got the thousand square feet?
And, and the cost is?
Significantly less than the $800,000. We can, we're gonna have to break it all down for bond council anyways, so.
Okay, all right, okay. At the last meeting, I asked some specific questions about this bond resolution. And I said that at that time, you don't have to answer them tonight because I don't think you'll have them right with you right now, but I am going to ask them tonight. And that what is our bond debt at this point in time in history? Tony?
That's something we're gonna have to depend on Jody, reflect to Jody.
Okay, but you're gonna vote on it. You're gonna vote on it.
We have approximately $15 million in bond debt right now, Mr. Celia.
Okay, and how much is our bond debt payment each year?
I don't have that information right in front of me, but I can surely give it to you if you want to stop down to my office. We'd be more than happy to give you all that information.
Okay, all right. The bond debt, so this is gonna take us up to $19 million, correct?
Approximately, yes.
Approximately $19 million, okay. The, I believe I heard that the payment on the bond debt will be paid for in part by the savings, by the use of the light, you know, the lightings that we're gonna save on using, just changing the lights out. I believe I heard that at one point in time.
Yep.
All right, but last year, the lighting cost us, it was not a savings, it was a cost. And there's a significant part in that bond. It says, I want to take a look at Section 4. "There shall be, shall annually be levy, levying on all taxable real property of said city, tax sufficient to pay the principal of, and to interest on such obligations as the same become due and payable." Which means if we're not gonna get enough money in savings, it's gonna go back on our tax, it's gonna be in our taxes, tax bills next year.
Standard bond language, I think, is in every.
Right, that's, I just, but you know, a lot of people, you know, won't see that. We did cover an awful lot of items that were, you know, were good items.
It is standard bond language to any bond. I'm sure it's, you know, that way the council is.
I, I understand what you're saying there, but there's a lot of people that don't understand what that means.
Okay.
Okay? They see that you're gonna do a bond, and they think the bond is, okay, that's nice. Means we know that's paid for right now, but you're putting it on somebody somewhere at some point in time. So that's the question I have on that, the bond issue. But if, plan on bringing that back, I'm sure you know that you have to, a member that had voted to table it, has to bring it back to be voted on again. Okay? Now, number seven, on the list of agenda items, 609 Ontario Street, for $1,000. Now, the bad taxes on that were $14,000 in 2018. Since then, the city, I believe, has had to make the county hall and the school district hall, is that correct, Mayor?
Oh yeah, yep.
Okay, so that's $13,000. So that's $27,000, and we're gonna sell it for $1,000.
Yeah, we have a rehab plan to redo it. Have you seen the rehab plan?
No, huh? And that's, that what I'm asking? Okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to know a little bit of the rehab plan.
Okay, that's, no, the point is that we're gonna sell it for $1,000, we're gonna lose $26,000. Okay, but where does Mr. Ryan Parley live? Because as far as I can tell, he does not own any property in Oswego County. Is there an address where he lives?
I don't think he included that in there though.
It wasn't in the list that I saw?
Yeah.
Are we selling it to an out-of-town landowner?
So, he repurposed a lot of properties when Ron Rooker was mayor, and checked in with us at the first of the year, wondered if there were any opportunities. I initially get out and walk around in wards in the city. Councilor Taylor brought me over to this property, and we took a look at it, and I immediately sought assistance to try to get this place fixed up, which I have a scope and work plan here for 609 Ontario Street. It's pretty extensive, he's gonna make at least a $4,000 investment to bring it up to a single-family home that somebody's gonna be able to live in, a first-time homeowner.
That's, that's, that was the next thing, you know, that's, that's the important thing about everything that we're doing with 609.
Yep.
Is it's going to be there.
Yep.
Now, the ones that we're gonna lose, we're gonna gain back at some point in time, yeah.
The scope of the work is to start on the interior first, so that hopefully the, I'm sorry, start on the exterior first. So hopefully that's cleaned up in the short term, because if you're out walking around, it's a mess. So we see that as a means of fixing this up, and, you know, if we can find others where we get a scope of work like this to fix up, I think the council would enter, I mean, we got 45 vacant properties right now. So if we have somebody that wants to come and do others of these, I think the council would be on board with that, I hope so. Let's fix our neighborhoods up. If it costs $1,000 to make it better, you know, let's make it better, Frank.
That's, and, and I'm just bringing up the points, Mayor. It's all I'm doing, bringing up the points.
Yeah, I'm bringing up ours.
Okay, well, it's, it's not a point of, you know, right or wrong, it's just a point. It's okay.
I'm bringing up ours.
And I understand the point about, it's, I'm sure that Ryan's been involved in it, and if it's that way, and it's gonna be a single-family home, then that's what we need in the city of Fulton.
My husband's an ice shore pal, Frank.
I know it is. I know that whole, that, I know that whole area quite well. I've gone down it many times, delivering students to different houses along that area. And I know that, you know, there's certain parts of the city that look bad, and there's certain parts of the city that look real good, and there's certain parts of the city that we're working on to make.
So I'd like you to say here, I'd like you to say here, hey, you're gonna fix this place up, you know, you're selling it for $1,000, you go, hey, that's a good thing. That's what I'd like you to say, Frank.
Well, as far as, as far as probably being out of town, when, when it's not.
Well, that's, that's the question, you know, if you're selling it to somebody that doesn't own, you know, property in the county, then you ask the question, where is, you know, who is he, and what is he gonna do? You answered that question, okay? And that's, that's what I asked the question for.
He's a local resident.
And I did say there, that if that's what we're doing, we're fixing things up, that that's what we need in the city of Fulton. I did say that, okay? Now, on to, we've got a public hearing in a week, you have two more public hearings a week later, and is there, these are all common council meetings, are they all gonna be in June, or one of them is just a public hearing? Public hearing on the rezoning, is that a common council meeting, or is that just a public hearing?
Just a public hearing, yep.
Okay, all right, so then there's the other one, okay? Now, the public hearing you're gonna have on solar reflectors and installations.
Yep.
Is that something we can speak on as to what it's gonna be?
Saturday.
I know it's gonna be on the 18th, but what is it going to entail? Because I know that at one point in time.
Yeah, the Plenary Commission has submitted a plan and a law to the city jury, and we're putting it forward.
And what are we doing? Because I know that back in, I can't remember the year, but.
So you've attended all the Plenary Commission meetings?
No, I haven't been to all of them, but, you know, the, the issue, what I, the question I'm asking, and the reason I'm asking is because the state offers a tax exempt exemption for solar panels being put on your house, and the city opted out of that. And now people, if you put solar panels on your house, you get taxed accordingly. And at that point in time, I brought up the point that those solar panels depreciate over time, but you're not depreciating what you're assessing the property. So are we gonna redo that again and add more taxes if somebody wants to try to save money on their solar panels, or what are we doing?
The hearing, I think, is more about where they can go and what they could look like. You know, I mean, we did not allot any solar power in the city, so that's part of the Plenary Commission.
So that's, that's what we're gonna be talking about. Fine, that's, that's good to be, and I already got the, what the polyground recreation areas are gonna be. So I'm all set on the agenda items. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Dave Mankiewicz, 460 West First Street.
I'm gonna hold my comments to the future public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on the agenda items? Now, we'll move on to our agenda. Item number four, resolve to approve the minutes from the May 21st, 2024 Common Council Meeting. Resolve that the minutes from the May 21st, 2024 Common Council Meeting are hereby approved and placed on file. May I have a motion? Councilor Chapman, may I have a second?
Second.
Councilor Avery, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carried. Item number five is a notation, to appoint Matthew Smith to the Electrical Board and the Plumbing and HVAC Board. Notation that the appointment by Mayor Weiss of Matthew Smith, 59 North Fourth Street, Golden York, to the Electrical Board and the Plumbing and HVAC Board at the Code Enforcement Bureau Chief, to fill the unexpired term of Malcolm Widering, effective immediately and expiring December 31st, 2026, is hereby entered into the minutes of this Common Council Meeting, June 4th, 2024, as a matter of record. Item number six, resolve to appoint Matthew Smith to the DRI Advisory Committee. Resolve to appoint Matthew Smith as Code Enforcement Bureau Chief to the DRI Advisory Committee. May I have a motion? Councilor Patrick, and a second?
Second.
Councilor Farnum, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carried. Item number seven, resolve to approve the sale of the property located at 609 Ontario Street. Whereas the property located at 609 Ontario Street, tax map number 236.41-01-21, has been acquired by the city through tax foreclosure proceedings. And whereas a purchase offer has been presented by Ryan Parwa in the amount of $1,000 for said property. And whereas this Common Council has determined that it would be in the best interest of the city to accept this offer. Now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with the New York State Real Property Tax Law 1166 and City Code subsection 17-2, the sale of said property to Ryan Parwa in the amount of $1,000 is hereby approved and confirmed. And be it further resolved that the mayor be authorized to execute all documents pertaining to this resolution. May I have a motion? Councilor Taylor, and a second?
Second.
Councilor Avery, this is a roll call vote, first ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Thank you, Common Council.
Motion carried. Item number eight, resolve to approve the sale of the property located at 516 Buffalo Street. Whereas the property located at 516 Buffalo Street, tax map number 236.65-01-06, has been acquired by the city through tax foreclosure proceedings. And whereas a purchase offer has been presented by Marybaud Holland in the amount of $500 for said property. And whereas this Common Council has determined that it would be in the best interest of the city of Fulton to accept this offer. Now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with the New York State Real Property Tax Law 1166 and City Code subsection 17-2, the sale of said property to Marybaud Holland in the amount of $500 is hereby approved and confirmed. Be it further resolved that the mayor be authorized to execute all documents pertaining to this resolution. May I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion, Councilor Avery, and a second, Councilor Hab.
Yes.
Roll call vote, first ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Item number nine, is resolve to authorize the City Clerk Chamberlain to advertise for a public hearing on June 11th, 2024, relative to the DRI rezon. Resolve that the City Clerk Chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at a special meeting of the Common Council on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Community Room of the Municipal Building located at 141 South First Street, Golden York, relative to the DRI rezon.
Can I just speak for a moment?
Sure.
There's no reason to take this off table, the old zoning, because everything's
There's no reason to take this off table, the old zoning, because everything, uh, this is all made updates. So there's no, no, uh, no reason to take, take an old item off the table that no longer exists. And I mean, if you go to Robert's Rules of Order, you know, it clearly states that, uh, motion to be taken from the table, let, this has been conducted. Motion not to be taken by the table in its meeting, it is dead. So my interpretation is that, um, the zoning that we put on the table is, is a dead item, not, not a done table. So here, we go ahead, please.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilor Avery, and a second?
Second.
Councilor Patrick, so roll call vote. First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number ten, resolve to authorize the City Clerk Chamberlain to advertise for a public hearing on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, relative to add in a chapter to the City of Fulton Code entitled Solar Collectors and Installations. Resolve that the City Clerk Chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, June eighteen, two thousand twenty-four, at seven P.M. in the common council chambers of the Municipal Building located at one forty-one South First Street, Fulton, New York, relative to add in a chapter to the City of Fulton Code entitled Solar Collectors and Installations. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilor Avery, and a second?
Second.
Councilor Farnum, roll call vote, first ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number eleven, resolve to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with CNS companies for additional services for the DRI rezone. Resolve that the mayor be authorized to sign a contract with CNS companies for additional services for the DRI rezone. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilor Avery, and a second?
Second.
Councilor Taylor, roll call vote, first ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, same thing with number twelve. It's all new, uh, all new legislation, so no need to untable it, because it's a table with previous names, it's all different. Closer.
Resolve to authorize issuance of a bond for energy performance improvements and street lighting system. Bond resolution dated June fourth, two thousand twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the construction of energy efficiency improvements to, and reconstruction of city buildings and facilities and street lighting systems, acquisition and for the city of Fulton, Oswego County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of four million five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and authorizing the issuance of four million five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof. Whereas the capital project herein after described as proposed has been determined to be a type-two action pursuant to the regulations of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, promulgated pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which regulations state that type-two actions will not have any significant adverse impact on the environment. And whereas is now desired to authorize the financing of such capital project. Now therefore be it resolved by the affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of the total voting strength of the common council of the city of Fulton, Oswego County, New York, as follows. Section one A, the construction of energy efficiency improvements to, and reconstruction of city buildings and facilities, and B, the acquisition of a street lighting system, including in each case, as applicable, original furnishings, equipment, machinery, apparatus, occurrences, and incidental improvements and expenses in connection therewith, in and for the city of Fulton, Oswego County, New York, is hereby authorized at the aggregate maximum estimate cost of four million five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Allocated three million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the class of objects or purposes described in A herein, and one million two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the specific object or purpose described in B herein. Section two, it is hereby determined that the plan for the financing of the eight percent maximum estimated cost is by the issuance of four million five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in bonds of said city, hereby authorized to be issued, therefore pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law, allocated three million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the class of objects or purposes described in section one A hereof, and one million two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the specific objects or purposes described in section one B hereof. Section three, it is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the A first of mention class of objects or purposes described in section one A hereof is ten years, pursuant to subdivision thirteen of paragraph A of section eleven point zero of the, of the local finance law, and the period of probable usefulness of the specific object or purpose described in section one B hereof is thirty years pursuant to the subdivision five thereof. It is hereby further determined that the maximum maturity of the serial bonds herein authorized, therefore, will exceed five years. Section four, that faith and credit of the city of Fulton, Oswego County, New York, are hereby irrevocably pledged for the payment of the principal off and interest on such obligations as the same respectively becomes due and payable. An annual appropriation shall be made in each year sufficient to pay the principal off and interest on such obligations becoming due and payable in such year. There shall annually be levied on all the taxable real property of said city, a tax sufficient to pay the principal off and interest on such obligations as the same become due and payable. Section five, subject to the provisions of the local finance law, the power to authorize the issuance of and to sell bond anticipation notes of the issuance and sale of serial bonds herein authorized, including renewals of such notes, is hereby delegated to the City Chamberlain, the Chief Fiscal Officer of said city. Such notes shall be of such terms, forms, and contents, and shall be sold in such manner as may be prescribed by said City Chamberlain, consistent with the provisions of the local finance law. Section six, all other matters except as provided herein relating to such bonds herein authorized, including date, denominations, maturities, interest payment dates, and whether said bonds shall be repaid in accordance with a schedule providing for substantially level or declining annual debt service, within the limitations prescribed herein, and the manner of execution of the same, and also including the consolidation with other issues, shall be determined by the City Chamberlain, the Chief Fiscal Officer of such city. Such bonds shall contain substantially the recital validity caused provided for in section fifty-two point zero zero of the local finance law, and shall otherwise be such form and contain such recitals in addition to those required by section fifty-two point zero zero of the local finance law, and as the City Chamberlain shall determine, consistent with the provisions of the local finance law. Section seven, the powers and duties of advertising such bonds for sale, conducting the sale, and awarding the bonds are hereby delegated to the City Chamberlain, who shall advertise such bonds for sale, conduct the sale, and award the bonds in such manner as she shall be best for the interests of said city, including but not limited to the power to sell said bonds to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. Provided however that in the exercise of these delegated powers, she shall comply fully with the provisions of the local finance law in any order or rule the state control or applicable to the sale of municipal bonds. The receipt of the City Chamberlain shall be full acquitances to the purchaser of such bonds, who shall not be obligated to seek to the application of the purchased money. Section A, the validity of such bonds or bond anticipation notes may be contested only if, one, such obligations are authorized for an object or purpose for which city is not authorized to expend money. Or two, the provisions law of law which should be complied with at the date of publication of this bond resolution are not substantially complied with, and an action, sue, or proceeding contesting such validity is commenced within twenty days after the date of such publication. Or three, such obligations are authorized in violation of the provisions of the Constitution. Section nine, this resolution shall constitute a statement of official intent for purposes of Treasury Regulations, sections one point one five zero dash two. Other than as specified in this resolution, no monies are or are reasonably expected to be reserved, allocated on a long-term basis, or otherwise set aside with respect to the permanent funding of the object or purpose described herein. Section ten, this resolution, which takes effect immediately, shall be published in summary form in the official newspaper of the said city designated for such purpose, together with a notice of the City Clerk and substantially the form set forth in paragraph A of section eighty-one point zero zero of the local finance law. I'm looking for a motion on this. Bond resolution, June fourth, two thousand twenty-four. We have a motion from Councilor Avery. May I have a second?
Second.
Councilor Taylor? The question of the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote on a roll call which resulted as follows. Count, uh, Councilor Farnum, first ward?
Yes.
Councilor Chapman, second ward?
Yes.
Councilor Patrick, third ward?
Yes.
Councilor Cobb, fourth ward?
Yes.
Councilor Avery, fifth ward?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor, sixth ward?
Yes.
The resolution was thereupon declared duly adopted. Item number thirteen, resolve to authorize the mayor to sign a tentative agreement with the CSEA Local One Thousand, AFS, CME, AFL, CIO, City of Fulton Unit Number Eight, zero-zero-one-dash-zero-zero.
Avery, on the council?
Anything else?
Go ahead, please.
Tommy, you know that, uh, it was amazing how we just worked everything out. We had a few meetings, uh, we went, met with council president, uh, the mayor, your board. Uh, it was a pleasure working with you. You guys actually gave something back to our community, which is very impressive, and you sacrificed, many of your employees sacrificed for the whole body, uh, which is amazing in itself, and, um, we're gonna vote, so I wish you guys luck. Thank you.
Anyone else from the council?
Yeah, Tommy, you do an excellent job this year, uh, leading the, uh, CSDA as a union lead. Very happy, uh, with the communication that went through on this. And, uh, thanks a lot for all you guys that you do, you know, outstanding employees.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to thank you guys. You guys are the best we got, so thank you very much for all you do.
Anybody else?
No, I just want to, uh, just, Councilor, we sat, uh, we sat down. It was, uh, very good negotiations. Well deserved, guys, everybody in the CSEA. Over the years, the CSEA has, uh, kind of taken the short end of the contracts. I know that for a fact. It's about time we gone up, so well deserved everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys do a great job. You know I always got your back, so you know how I feel.
Whereas the agreement between the city of Fulton and the CSEA Local One Thousand, AFS, CME, AFL dash CIO, City of Fulton Unit Eight, zero-zero-one-dash-zero-zero, dated for January first, two thousand twenty-two, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, has been open for review. Resolve that the mayor be authorized to sign a tentative agreement between the city of Fulton and the CSEA Local One Thousand, AFS, CME, AFL, CIO, AFL dash CIO, excuse me, City of Fulton Unit Eight, zero-zero-one-dash-zero-zero, effective January first, two thousand twenty-five, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilor Patrick, and a second by Councilor Avery. This will be a roll call vote. First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Definitely.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
I'm proud to say a motion has carried. Item number fourteen, resolve to authorize the City Clerk Chamberlain to advertise for a public hearing on June eighteen, two thousand twenty-four, relative to amending chapter four forty-nine, article one, entitled Playground and Recreation Areas. Resolve that the City Clerk Chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, June eighteen, two thousand twenty-four, seven P.M. in the common council chambers of the Municipal Building located at one forty-one South First Street, Fulton, New York, relative to amending chapter four forty-nine, article one, entitled Playgrounds and Recreation Areas of the Code of the City of Fulton. May I have a motion?
Oh, yes.
Councilor Taylor, and a second?
Second.
Councilor Cobb? This also will be a roll call vote. First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried. We've now come to the part of our agenda where we have our open comment period. And I have Jim By of eight twenty-seven Forest Avenue. Would you like to come up to the podium and speak, please?
Hi, I, uh, moved here back in, uh, two thousand nineteen. I really like this little city. It's a nice, nice place to live. Uh, people are really friendly. Walk your dog, everybody stops, waves to you, talks to you and stuff. But, got a little problem. These property across the street from me, uh, adjacent to, uh, Harvey King's property there, it's all undevelopable, like, it's too small to build anything on or anything else. But the guy bought it. I think he's trying to make our life miserable for our neighborhood. He putting toilets over there with plastic flowers in it. He putting banners over there. Uh, looks like a used car lot banner running right through the middle of the property. Uh, Harvey took care of that property for forty years, mowed it, kept it up, planted flowers over there, everything else, made it look really presentable. Now it's starting to look like a dump over there, and, you know, I think we're probably one of the highest tax wards in the city. And, uh, I just don't think it's right that, uh, this guy didn't get away with it. Now I also heard that the city offered, because there was some kind of confusion with the survey when the guy bought it at auction, that the city offered to buy the property back. But, the lawyer for the city said, no, we're not gonna do that. Could you explain to me why the property won't be bought back?
The city, not while I've been here, has offered to buy it back, though.
Well, that's the, true to the great mind anyway.
What's that one?
That's just what hurts me, right?
Yeah, the city did not make an offer to buy it back.
Okay, but, could there be some kind of, uh, deal with this guy?
The issue is, uh, I mean, Mr. Perry bought that site unseen. He didn't conduct a survey, he didn't really realize what he was buying. And, you know, he, I can't speak for him, he's not here. But, so if we did that, if we bought, so, let's say somebody, uh, bought six oh nine Ontario Street. Okay, uh, at city auction. Let's say they found, let's say they paid forty thousand for it at auction. So they got in, said they had to do a remodel, and learned that it was gonna cost them eighty thousand dollars to do that. Then turned around and said, uh, hey, you know, we don't want the same, or we want the city to buy it back. I mean, the terms of the auction are very clear. Mr. Perry did not read the, the terms of the auction, the fine print. You know, I don't know that, uh, the council should, I, we have a toilet on the corner of East Broadway, and, uh, what is that, Jeff Park Street? The, 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 who?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, how was that?
Oh, geez, uh, I believe about six years.
Yeah, so, uh, and I'm not trying to, to, you know, I mean, these problems exist elsewhere.
Yep.
Uh, you know, we certainly feel your pain. I mean, we have been researching the last couple of days, trying to get something back, uh, done here. We're researching the burner clause in the, uh, auction. We're looking at banners, because when you stake a property, usually it's done with stakes or a fence. It's not done with a banner.
Yeah.
So we're looking at our banners. So we're looking at our banner code. We're looking at all kinds of different things to try and figure out.
Okay, I just didn't wanna turn it into a toilet farm over there.
Yeah, we, we don't want it either. We don't want it either, you know?
Okay.
I, I mean, we, we think it's very, you know, I can't speak for us collectively, but, uh, you know, and it's all different than, than the issue of Councilor Todd's board. I mean, you know, having a, if, if you go buy it, the city says it's been there six years. Um, you know, so.
I didn't, yeah, I just, the way you're going about it, I think it's.
All, uh, I saw it from day one.
Yeah.
Uh, to me, it's a quality of life issue down there. I think it's terrible. Uh, you know, I've talked to the mayor on numerous occasions, different ideas and so on. We are, you know, as much as people wanted out of it yesterday, you know, we have to follow certain guidelines, as you understand. Uh, we could go to some of some property and take a swatch, have a tour and a walk through, but, you know, it's a problem and, uh, we will do all we can.
All right. Well, I appreciate that.
I just want everybody to know, you know, 'cause I've taken phone calls good and bad.
I bet, yeah.
So, you know, we are working on it. I have since day one. I think I've talked to just about everybody, either council or the mayor, and what we're doing, so we're working on it.
I believe he is willing to sell them.
Yeah, probably from where you bought it, but I'm sure of it.
Yeah, definitely.
I'm not interested.
That's what Cardo is doing, right?
Yeah, there you go. All right, well, thank you very much.
Rick has here three times, South?
Third.
Third Street, thank you.
Good evening. Um, I don't know what property that was, Dad. I know where the area is.
Yes.
I bought a piece of property from the city, uh, two years ago, two years ago, at three fourteen South Third Street. Um, nobody lived there. The city mowed it for eleven years, every two weeks. Um, I bought it. Come to find out, um, I wasn't able to build on it. Didn't tell me that. Had a conversation with the past administration and, um, I got a variance. I went to the board, they got a variance, I couldn't build on it. And my question is, like this man who bought it, he didn't come see it a lot, I understand that, and this has happened more than once in the city than I know of. Why would you sell something if you can't build on it? Why would somebody wanna buy a piece of property if they can't build on it or develop it? Just to take the money? I don't, I don't get it.
I, I don't get it either.
And mine wasn't through the land trust, mine was through the city. I had, I mean, the Marbido, the Realtor, and the mayor at the time. I don't get how you can sell something and then tell somebody that they can't build on it. Why do I want a lot that I have to mow? Meanwhile, the city mowed it for eleven years. I, I, I don't, I, is it just a money thing that you wanna get the money and say, hey, you can't build on it? Because I think there's a lot on Philip Street with the same thing. It's too small to build on. But if you buy it unforeseen, I get it, he should have read the ta, I, I understand that. But also, in fact, show good faith. If you can't build on it, you can't build on it. So I sell it. That's all you'll say. Thank you.
Doug Blake, eight thirteen Forest Avenue.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the D R I. For some reason, I thought we were gonna start doing some work downtown below the gazebo on the river. What's the hole up there?
Yeah, we, uh, I think he's projecting in two thousand twenty-five to get certain things in.
Why is it taking so long? I don't understand. I thought this was two, three years ago.
Yeah.
You go to, I go to Phoenix, down there on the river, it's absolutely gorgeous. You go to Minnetonka, I'm not gonna compare us with the Swiggle, it's not fair. You go down there, it smells like a urinal. You think you're in Manhattan. I would just down there, all the lights are all broken, all the graffiti is on all the walls. You think the boats wanna come in here? Uh, you can't use the bathrooms, they're locked up. You know, we have the river, we have the lake, and we're not taking advantage of it. That's our best resource here. I think we need to take another look at things. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That's the speed of my work. I stand, I believe, hour a day there at the gazebo, a couple hours a week, talking to those people, trying to come up with a plan of what we can do so as it doesn't smell like a urinal down there, so the trash is picked up.
Well, tomorrow was the tombs and it's still a mess. I went down to the smorgasbord before I came here. Floored down by the river. What issues are, I was there, I was on the trail last night, walking.
Yeah, me too.
Down by the, the river by the docks.
Yep.
There's bread all over the place, the people are feeding the seals. There's graffiti on the walls.
There was one spot.
The lights are all out, broken.
I didn't go out, it wasn't at night, so there weren't, there was one spot.
I got, it was blocked.
One spot of graffiti. So, uh, Mr. Blake?
Yes.
I have written up those lights. Every one of them lights is out on that riverbank, okay? I've written up the lights, I've written up, uh, the graffiti, I've written up the busted, uh, the busted fence down there. It didn't work good with that? I get nowhere. So, I'm trying, and I might get anywhere with it, but I'm trying. That's all I'm gonna say about that. Thank you.
Okay, my reminder, David Reynolds, six eighteen Union Street.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I got, I got a couple, a couple of purchases. I, I gotta see, you know, down North Bay, and I've been down there for thirty-nine years. They told me the other day I had to move my refrigerator. I got told, I gotta do this, I gotta do this, and I got my, I got my yard all mowed and go down there any ten year mile, I'm in, out, and my site is E, E one. And I had a refrigerator down there, now I've got them, now I've got no refrigerator anymore because they told me I had to move it. I think there should be, everybody who came down North Bay should be treated the same. Shouldn't I know, you shouldn't I know what you call, what you call favors to, uh, what you call this girl knows, these people, and they get treated different. Everybody should be treated the same. I don't care. And, you know, like I said, I've been down there for, for eight, for eight, nine years, all right? I moved everything. I heard you were down there today, Mayor, walking, walking down there, I heard you're down there. But, but a second is on my mind, little kids. Okay? How come we don't open up that pool again over by what I call Royal Oil? There is nothing here in, in the Fulton, the city for, for the little kids. They took the Bible out. Can, can any way, can anybody put, put that pool back up? You know, you know, kids don't got nothing. They don't got nothing here. You know, you know, that mayor and the friggle did a good job.
We got a splash there, I believe.
It's water, though, Mayor, it's water, it's, it's, you know, you know, like, uh, like the kids like to go out and, like, eight, nine degrees, they like going to the pool. Is there any way we can open that pool back up, get towards the lake? Like, like, when they did that, what I call, what I call Nasty's Pool? They put, they put Nasty's, well, pool down there and their, and, uh, their other, other pool. All the bricks and anything. Can, can we work on something for the, for the kids, little kids? That's all I'm asking, you know? Well, let's make something for the little kids. That's all. I don't think that's, uh, too hard to have. You know, I will donate money if it takes that, but let's do something for the little kids. There is nothing here for the kids. Like the Bible, that's gone now. There's nothing here for the kids. We need to make something for the kids, that's all I'm asking. That's all I gotta say, yeah, I'm mayor.
Appreciate it, you guys.
Frank Castilla, three seventy-two South Third Street.
Good evening, again. Uh, first comments, uh, are gonna be as a county legislator. Today, at the, uh, E D P meeting, uh, Mobility Management has issued a, a farmer's market bus route. At the meeting, I had a copy of one and I asked, uh, the director if she would, uh, email a copy of it to the county clerk or the city clerk, so that she would pass it on to the six county councilors. She, you know, misunderstood what, that the email said the wrong thing. It didn't say that for everybody they get one. I hope that Jody will make a copy and pass it on to them. It's very important because it's for the farmer's market. I did ask at that meeting if there was still going to be a bus going to the Swiggle Farmer's Market, and there will still be bus passes available to be able to go to the Swiggle Farmer's Market. Okay, so, uh, get the information if you can. Jody, I'm sure he'll give it to you, all right? So pay attention to that, it's, it's very important. Uh, it's something that we do and it's something that we, you know, that we need. Also, in the E D P meeting, I asked about the, there was a question, not a question, but comment made by Tim Stall in regards to the governor's new housing initiative that she has out there. And he stated, and I'm sure that Austin and we like, well, correct me if I, if I misquote, stated that there in the, the, uh, so, carrot that she's dangling out there, there's nothing about affordable housing in that agreement. So, in order to get that designation, it doesn't have to be affordable housing, it can be housing. Now, Austin, didn't somebody say that, that Syracuse is doing it only with single family homes?
I'm not sure on that. I think it's one of their initiatives that they're looking at. They're looking at multiple initiatives, uh, single family is one of those.
That's, that's kind of what I'm looking for in City Fulton also, okay? That's it, I'm, as a county legislator, I, I don't like to bring things to the common council as the county legislator, uh, at one point in time, we were going to be given a spot to do that, because I like to be able to speak on issues that are dealing with the city itself, okay? Those two issues were very important to us, the bus routes and, uh, the affordable housing. Uh, now, I'm, just as Frank Castilla, the advocate for information, uh, I'd like to know why we can't have public hearings on each D R I project separately, so that members of the public would be able to come like we had with C D A and Housing Visions. Uh, they came here and we had a, uh, public comment and there was questions that were asked specifically, so people would know exactly what their project's going to do and how it's gonna affect them and how it's gonna help them. Okay, so I would just like to be able to have that on the projects that we have, that we've been, uh, given the okay to go through with, and that would be super to be able to do that. Just, uh, I wanna talk about, uh, a, uh, project that was in the paper where the City of Fulton and the I D A working together on projects to be completed. I'd like to know what, you know, what that project is, if we can get some more information on it. Now, again, I'm hearing, I brought it up, I think it was two meetings ago, the fact that if you think that you're gonna move affordable housing from the corner of Fourth and Fay Street down to Seventh and Fay Street, and that's going to be all right with the people in the fourth ward, the people in the City of Fulton, it's not going to be, go over well, but if you got the votes, you can do what you wanna do, and there isn't much else that anybody can do other than voice their opinion on it and ask that you not do it. I brought it up at the I D A meeting today about the fact that there are so many people that are of one political background that are saying that they want affordable housing, and yet that's coming from a political group that's run basically out of New York City. And I can't see that as something the City of Fulton should be in favor of. I know any do I want to have, and we're gonna have a public hearing on it, I know, and so I'll discuss it at that one. It's, it's the point of having a housing project coming into the entrance of the City of Fulton. And if you say yes to one part of it, you can say yes to all of it. And I just, I can't abide by it. I would rather see single family homes, just like the one that we're gonna redo down on, you know, Ontario Street. That's what we need. We need those for, that's affordable housing, because that house will probably go for maybe a hundred fifty thousand dollars when the guy's done. And that's affordable. Not back in my day, but, you know, now it's affordable. Okay, so, you know, that's what we need in the City of Fulton. We don't need something that's gonna bring more cost to us. Just, uh, it's, there's, there's, there's a lot of things that are going on in the city that Mr. Blake brings up a very good point of view about the walkage. That, no disrespect to the county councilors of any area, okay? We're not talking about that, okay? We're talking about generally the looks, what you're, what you're portraying. Doug, do you have the, uh, pavilion over at, uh, Bullhead Point, right? If you go over there and try to sit and eat, wife and I went over there, what's on the picnic table, Doug?
Her kid.
Yeah, that's saying a kind. Okay? So, you know, that, those are the things that portray what we are in the City of Fulton. And we're not that. We're hurting. We need more and more. We have so many groups in this city that do volunteer with it. Ryan, you're not one of the great ones, okay? There's a lot of them. Everybody's doing things. And that's what we, you know, those are the things that we need. They don't add to the cost of the city. Right? Okay? That's what brings our city back to what it once was. We need more of them. We don't need more issues and more headaches that'll cause to them. Now, Mayor, during the last, when I was, I was running for board, I brought up to you the, your point, to you, about the islands in the city.
Yep.
Okay, now, do we own all the properties that are on the islands, like the one at Broadway and Holly Drive? Is that one that we maintain and, and we have to take care of? Correct?
I have to find out for sure. I, I'm making a.
I'm pretty sure we, we mow it, and it's the same way with the one coming down off Crosby Hill. Now, the reason I brought this up almost ten years ago is because when you mow it, you've got signs all over it. The city workers, the C S E A workers, they've gotta stop and get off their vehicles, take the signs down, mow, and put the signs back up. There are spots in, throughout Landmark County and in other parts of the state that say, no signage. And I'm sorry, we've got a beautiful city and we should keep it that way. We shouldn't make it look like a three ring circus coming in and going out of this city. And that's all I'm asking you to do, Mayor, is ask to say, hey, here's your signs, we're gonna put up a no signs on you. People can't put signs. People can't put signs on, on down here at City Hall, can they, out there on the property? Right? You can't put, can't put signs on the church, you can't put signs on the, you know, over at the, uh, War Memorial. Anything that is owned by the city or the state is not allowed. And that's all, it's nothing, I don't have anything against any one body or any big party. I have it against all of it. This city is something that we should be proud of and say, "Hey, when you come into this city, you know what I would have liked to have seen, Ryan? At the entrance to Fulton, coming in off Corey North? Did you see back in the day when, uh, Northern, uh, Great Northern Mall had all the flags up on there? That's what I would have loved to have seen, up on that island. And the other island coming in off, you know, off Crosby Hill. That's what makes us say, you know, this is what we're about. That's all I'm asking you guys to do. Keep that in mind when you're doing everything. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Drew.
Okay, Tom Chen. CSJA president?
I just wanna say thank you to the mayor, the council, for the decision that you guys made going. I wanna thank the city's Chamberlain, Commissioner Smith. The administration that we have is what strives us. You guys push us. And I wanna thank my union brothers and sisters for what they do. It's my honor to represent you guys. I just wanted to say that, so thank you again for what you guys decided.
I don't, I don't normally speak, but I sit on the DRI advisory committee, and I know there were a few comments this evening in regards to the DRI and the implication on Fulton. And Fulton is a beautiful city, and DRI is just gonna do amazing things to enhance the city. Um, a lot of people may not be aware, or they're unable to attend the, uh, DRI meetings. Um, and Mr. Castilla mentioned something about possibly having a meeting in the evening. I do wanna let people know that our website, which is designed by John Hurt, who's the SJA, is a beautiful website. And on that website is a DRI page that lists all of the projects that are taking place in the DRI and, uh, the business owners that are also taking place of the city projects. So you can always access that. Our website is fultonny.org. And there's a lot of other great information on that website as well besides just the DRI. But for those people who have questions, they can reach out to myself, I'm the city clerk Chamberlain. You can reach me right at the city clerk's office. There are other contact information, um, people that you can contact on that site. So, please reach out because it's a wonderful thing, and, um, I just wanna make sure people are aware that this information is out there on our website. So, thank you.
Yeah, that's, uh, one of the things we did at the very beginning of the first year was, uh, get the management of the website back into the city's hands and not outside administrator. And I appreciate the council's, uh, help and support, a lot of the city do that. Yeah, I think we'll call the council, and I, so normally, ahead of time, I, I let the public, or I let the council know who I'm gonna start with, and I did not do that tonight because I don't like to put anybody on the spot really, so I'll start with the first ward tonight and see if the council far and best. Council Chen?
Uh, I'm all set, thank you.
Council Patrick?
Just to address, uh, Mike's situation, the third ward, please try to be patient. We are trying to do something about it, which could have been done a long time ago, but, you know, it's been going on a couple of weeks, I understand. I drive by it every day, I see it, I talk to Harvey. Uh, I tried to set something up at one time to have, uh, Harvey actually appropriate, or, you know, buying it all. Because Randy, Randy actually outbid Harvey. And that's what happened, because Harvey didn't wanna buy it, but, uh, you know, I wish we had the law in the books, something we could do, but right now, we're trying to, uh, investigate every possibility that we have, you know? We're not, we're not gonna put up this, this is quality of life. And, uh, Doug, you're absolutely right. I wanna move this DRI Marina project. We got the DRI Marina project, we got the DRI Library project. I would like to move those forward a year ago. I think we need to move them forward. And, uh, I agree with the article side, so, that's all I got. Thank you, Doug.
Council Chen?
Yeah. I always, uh, when I get involved with, uh, Burton Public Works, uh, I've never had a problem when I reported something, uh, immediately getting to them. So, like I said, you guys, we can't give you enough recognition, uh, excellent job by all of them. And, uh, the crowd, the crowd here at these, uh, county council meetings are staying strong. We got a lot of important meetings this month, and attendance is gonna be very important. Uh, there's gonna be some problems with decision-making, and we would like to hear the voices of the City of Fulton here. Um, and, uh, thanks for coming.
Council Avery?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say congratulations to all of you, um, and thank you for your hard work and dedication to our city, and congratulations.
Council Kaylee?
Congratulations, guys. You guys deserve every ten minutes of such a very, right? You guys really are the backbone of the city. And Doug, again, we're trying, buddy, just be patient. They'll, they'll come around, alright? I know if they can see most of it.
My wife, huh?
Well, I don't know. That's all I got, thanks.
A few things, uh, try to get through quickly. Uh, try to, try to get through quickly. Uh, two of June starts tomorrow, doing the two down at the gazebo. Uh, tomorrow, there's a, uh, historical marker dedication of the public library, that's at 10 a.m. Uh, if you drove by and you've seen the marker covered up, they're gonna unveil it tomorrow. Uh, one thing I do wanna shout out that probably hasn't gotten much publicity, uh, there's a bench along the, uh, canal dedicated to Bob and Sandy Weston. The Lions Club is gonna dedicate that at 5:30, uh, tomorrow along the canal way there. Uh, if, if you're around in New Bob and Sandy, I appreciate you coming down for that. The Black Village Kickout Program Dinner, that's, uh, tomorrow night at 6:00. I think I only heard from Council Chen, that members of the council are coming. Uh, Hey Thursday, Abdoments with Grownups at Grandview School, that's at 7:45 a.m. I'm not gonna pass up a dome, I'll be there. Uh, 6:00 p.m., so the Carlton Barrett Day that was held down here last year, been moved to Bonney School this year. I know we gave a presentation, uh, a couple council meetings ago. Uh, it's also the 80th anniversary of D-Day. And Council Taylor is gonna be one of the veteran honorees at that at 6:00 p.m., or, at Bonney School. On Thursday night, so if you're free, you could attend that. Uh, my open line is Friday this weekend, the host from the Pratt House, uh, from 10 to 1:00. I'm just, this one, our giving tours, uh, and I went to Pratt House, so you're welcome to come see me there. Uh, this weekend, Fulton Downtown Markets, 8 to 2, will be the opening of the farmer's markets. Uh, I believe the CNY Art Center's got something going on. We got vendors and craft vendors, and I believe, uh, kids vendors now, so a pretty big event in our downtown area this week. Doug, we highlighted also shirts and skirts. Uh, the Square Dance Club hosted the, uh, event down here also on Saturday. I'm not sure what time that starts. I do know that they have, uh, visitors coming from, um, farmer's rights, so you might stop and check on that. I have participated with them, and it's not as hard as it looks. Once they give you instructions, you can, uh, fall right in line, and, uh, you know, when you watch it, it's kinda difficult, but, uh, once, uh, they show you the moves, it works out pretty good. The libraries have a book sale, uh, during that time as well. The Pratt House will be open that day, normally they're not open on Saturdays. I know there'll be former Presbyterian Church also, uh, Pastor Monty was here last council meeting, and they are doing like a cookout, uh, also on Saturday, I believe it starts at noon for that. So, uh, that's gonna be going on, so a lot going on Saturday, and I, I told the council that, uh, you're pretty busy week. Uh, one thing, the Department Head meeting on, uh, Thursday, that I have with the Department Heads, I asked for them to create a, uh, two-hour block somewhere in the month of June. Um, I don't know, but it, it's not really a mental health day, but a team-building day. So, I, I asked, I reported, uh, our Department Heads, uh, so if the city office is closed one day in the month of June, uh, for a couple hours, I wanna get that out. I know that, uh, Public Works talked about maybe doing a softball game over at Benetton. But, uh, I want some time for our employees to take some time, uh, doing some bonding. So I, I authorized that, so, um, if Frank, you're driving, and you see him playing kickball in Beverly Park, you'll know where that came from. If, uh, I located it ahead of time, you won't have to ask me at a meeting why that was, go, huh? Aside from that, uh, I think that's all I have tonight. I appreciate everybody coming out, and, uh, let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Result of this county council meeting being adjourned, may I have a motion? Councilor Avery, a second. Councilor Taylor, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Extentions. This meeting has been adjourned.